They say twenty-two.
Yeah, he said he went through his ankle, went all the way through. And of course he hit the ground because his ankle just gave him out. And he looks up and his buddy's running away from him, he's like, hey, where are you going? He goes, you're gonna shoot me back.
It ripped a hole in my pants. The blood was just pulsating like three foot out of my leg. I had to stick my finger in the hole and walk with a straight leg about half a mile back to the truck.
Good times, good times. Well, I guess we can start at five thirty. You guys want to talk about first?
We still gotta do a flag sleuthing on this stuff, don't we?
No, well, it's not really a meeting, but we can have a flag sleuth going.
Look to you guys.
What's that?
You wanna have a flag sleuth and prayer?
Sure.
Everybody wanna join me in flag sleuth?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Father God, we thank you for this time to come together as a community, bless this meeting and look over us as and give us strength and wisdom tonight as we make decisions that affects our employees. We ask this in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
All right. Employee handbook?
Yep.
Okay. Oh, there's my glasses. So we have the last updated one, which was April of two thousand and two.
And it looks like we got resolutions that made a difference to them.
I got a couple of questions before we get started, just so I know what I'm looking at and what I'm thinking about. Any of you department heads, feel free to answer these questions. The stuff that were provided here, they look like bullet points. Is this stuff that you guys typed up for us for today or is this stuff that you actually give to your employees? Like bullet points for the county appraiser, things like that? Or is this, is this what you give your people or?
This is a job description in my office, I must put together before I got here, but it's still good for what my people do.
But this is what you give them when you hire them?
Sure, yeah.
Okay, and is there a sheet that they sign that you retain to show that they've received a copy and? No?
And when these resolutions are made over the last couple of years, are they added to the book or is it no? So nothing's actually been changed in here unless it's on a resolution here? But we was never able to. Okay. And the job descriptions that we're looking at here, is these the ones that you were working on?
Uh, no, I was told to stop job descriptions as well as the handbook. So what we have is kind of personal things that took place.
And these handbooks here, is this what everyone gets?
That is a job description, that's a book of job descriptions. Can you tell me what's at the table?
Please?
Yes. Please come up here and tell us what you've laid out.
I'll use yours as an example if that's okay.
Yeah, go ahead.
This book is the job descriptions that if we have a work comp claim or we have an unemployment hearing that we have to go to, they always ask for job descriptions. So this is what we use. The ones that were in the front flap, which are these, are the ones that have been completed since I've been here. They've been updated or added to these job descriptions. Nothing else had been done from what I'm aware of. If I was asked to do job descriptions, this is kind of the format that they took on when I started a couple of years ago.
So is there a, is there a countywide handbook that everybody gets basically the same thing?
Okay, you're talking about two different things. This is just job descriptions.
Right.
Okay, so then you have a handbook. So handbooks are right here.
Policy and procedures, right?
Yep, this is your handbook. This is what every employee gets when they come onboard. It's also on our website. This, these resolutions were done over, we had to go through all of our resolution books to see what might have affected the handbook. And so if the handbook says something different, this is what we go by. So that's one thing.
Does this come with a signed sheet to sign saying that they've received it?
And that's in their employee file.
Okay.
Susan, can we get a copy of the resolutions?
Sure, sure, yeah. Most of it's stuff that is already being done. There was, during my time here, there was some issues with sick leave. They conflict in our handbook and so I had taken this to the previous commission to let them know nothing was ever done with it. But so I just gave it to you for informational purposes so that you know that there is some, the sick leave policy does have some conflicts. The current policy for the sick leave bank, we have a community pool. That's the one that's on top. We had talked to the previous commission and I included this email where we had talked about changing the policy and a couple of different options, so there's two options in here. They never went forward with anything, so I provided all that to you as well. But it'll go right along with the handbook. Electronic acceptable use policy. This is the IT policy that talks about how the different things for it. Employees sign off on this. There is, there was some issues with that and so I've attached that on the back of it for you guys to take in. Just so, that probably needs to go in the handbook. I also provided you with a sample handbook from SHRM, which is Human Resources Society, if you want to look at that. I also provided you with different checklist of things that need to go in a handbook. And then several attorney general opinions on handbooks when it comes to elected officials so that you understand, there's probably some things in our handbook that need to be pulled out because the hiring, firing, demotion, those kinds of things are handled by the elected official in their office. And so this just talks to those facts. There were some other things in there too about nepotism and so I just printed off all those for you. This is the start of the new handbook. And there, we did some sections and then I was told to not do it, not work on it. So this is kind of like what we started to do. So anyway, that's where we are on that.
You were told not to work on it by?
A previous commission.
Thank you.
Well, since we obviously haven't had time to look over this, you guys wanna bring the figureheads up here and let them give us any suggestions or?
I figure it's good, we're gonna, that was what my, my intent was was to set up a future, the next work session to bring, you know, widen the table, I would say. But my question is, I guess is, do you guys hand out handbooks? This, this one here? Yeah, well, without the, the resolution updates, I take it. What about you, Sheriff?
Ours is the policies and procedures that describe what you're supposed to do.
You do what?
Policies and procedures that describe what the deputies are supposed to do.
I mean, do you use this handbook here or do you guys got a different one?
No, we use sections that will update.
Right, right. And then the job descriptions, do you do them, use them too?
I have to look at and revise them.
Okay.
Our job descriptions dictate and under key dispatches.
Right, right. Okay. Just trying to see where we're at so that we know what we gotta, what we, where we're going with it, so. K Camp also has a pretty good, I haven't been able to get on it, but they tell me it's a good one. But.
David, we, we do use the IT, the new IT form when we go inside.
Okay. Okay.
So basically as it stands, everybody gets the same paperwork, everybody signs the same paperwork and everybody retains the same paperwork. Except for the sheriff's office, because I know it's a little different story.
Well, they do, they do follow the vacation and sick leave policy, correct? They fall under that for the regular handbook and then he has to obviously have a different.
Well, we get a detailed CD with a little bit more than what's on here.
So I, how familiar is everybody, all the department heads with the handbook? I mean, is there, that's why we're having this, is there things we need to change, things you want to update, things you want to take out, add in, adjust? I mean, this is for you guys to give us your thoughts, any of you that wanna chime in.
I think everything, the time we start to go over, we get to the vacation and sick leave and it kind of.
That's always the biggest.
Yeah, it kinda goes.
The vacation and sick leave?
Yeah. And it's really, it's really an issue for your public safety people. And I'm talking about EMS, sheriff corrections. It's not as easy for them to take, use the vacation and so, and it doesn't roll over from year to year. And we've talked in great length of what's the best way to do it because, you know, you're still having to cover shifts where you don't necessarily have to cover a shift at public safe, or at public works or in the clerk's office. When I worked for the school district, something that we did that kind of helped alleviate that is we would allow vacation to roll into sick leave, not all of your hours, but some hours. And people don't get sick leave paid out until they've been here ten years. So it's kind of an incentive for longevity. It's a, it's a different way of looking at it so that they don't lose their vacation if they possibly put it in sick leave.
Well, when it comes to, I'm speaking for myself only, when it comes to law enforcement, the vacation's a budgeted item, so I will never have an issue with carryover for the sheriff's department.
Other than the liability that it creates for the county, it's a, it's a huge expense. So that's what you need to understand is the cost of it. Because you budget for it one year, but you don't budget for it the next year.
But if we're budgeting everybody to have vacation.
Either carry over or pay out, but I mean, the payout would, I, I understand what you're saying. That a payout would solve the budget issue for that current year. But that would just be something we would have to look at and address for a carryover because it does need to be addressed, it's never been addressed.
Usually when it comes to the, it's a budgetary issue because are you gonna pay the vacation in the next year? Does it come out of that budget or does it come out of the current budget at the end of the year?
Right.
We can't see the crystal balls to who's going to use their vacation and who's not. So that's kind of the hiccup, trying to figure out for budgetary purposes.
Well, but wouldn't, wouldn't the budget, like if you didn't use your vacation this year and we rolled it over to next year, wouldn't that money roll over?
No.
Well, in the past, it's been use it or lose it.
Yes.
And I think at very least, we need, if they can't use it, they need to be paid out for it. It's already budgeted, it needs to be paid out. Is that something that would satisfy your people, Bill? To pay it out at the end of the year if they don't get to use it?
Well, no, because depending on where my budget's at and being paid out, I can be doing a budget based on the wages and salaries.
You don't have the money.
So I don't have the money there, that's why.
So we budgeted in, we budgeted in based on him taking a forty hour vacation, but if he doesn't take it, then we don't have the extra money to pay him an extra forty hours just to.
And then at the end, do I have enough money for the payout?
No, and that's, he's got a good point because when he, when you, that person takes a vacation, right? So he's still having to cover it with the deputy. So then that person's got overtime because he's covered that person and so the budget's actually eaten up with.
Well, that's, that's gonna be, that's gonna be the case no matter what. Even if you plan a vacation, someone's still gotta cover the road.
And you experienced that as being a deputy. How many hours of overtime for ship coverage, even the under sheriff and myself still covering that, a salary? That was always the argument, was the overtime. Three salaried employees that are covering ninety thousand dollars for those overtime? I mean, it's not gonna correct itself. So, and you worked those overtime to cover those shifts along with your under sheriff and myself assisting in those calls, correct?
That's the reason I'm trying to think of a way to help you out.
Well, I have a way to help it out, my problem, but more possibly, if that's more personnel to make sure that somebody goes on vacation or two people go on vacation, one person goes on vacation, then we have emergency medical treatment of some sort on the same ship. What do we do? So we've had that before. Somebody goes on vacation, I get a two week's notice and that person's gone. So it's a balancing act. And I wish I had that crystal ball to actually tell me what's gonna happen in July or August of this year and where I'm gonna be at.
Another problem with turning it into sick time is when you do get paid out your sick time, you only get a quarter of it.
But you at least didn't lose it.
It's still on the way, three quarters of.
Yeah, I'm not.
You'd always do a carryover and that, those numbers based on whatever you decide. Your first year, you can carry over ship workers forty-two hours. And then they start accruing, but they can't exceed that once they get to that point by their anniversary date is when they accrue it, when I was, when I was working. And you had that set number that they could exceed. So and if they exceeded that number, they had to put, the sheriff or whoever it is, the department had to submit a request to the commission to carry over whatever that exceeded number is. Say it's just the full number area you had. And say they're sixteen hours over that, they have to submit that to the commission to approve that and they only have sixty to ninety days to have whatever you see necessary to burn that excess out.
Well, that's basically how they do it at the city, so you've worked both places, Susan, so.
And our liability was huge. We, you have a lot more, you have a lot more money at the city for flexibility, we don't have that flexibility here. But I, I think maybe even the bigger question is, is vacation is there to give you relief. Why are we not, why are we not using the relief? Is it because we aren't staffed, we aren't staffed appropriately and so?
I can only speak for when I was there, there was just barely enough of us. And if someone took off, somebody had to work. And I know you have a few extra people there now with detectives and stuff like that, so I don't know how you're, uh, I don't know how, how it works now for you guys, so I'm not gonna speak on it, so.
But as far as funding goes, when you pay that money out at the end of the year or if you have that carryover, the funds are gonna be the funds. I know if I lost a guy, aren't paid out for help for sick leave, because once you're there five years, you were able to receive fifty percent of whatever you had. But that cost is just a cost and unfortunately, there's no way around it. I had a guy that had been there ten years and he's got three weeks vacation. He gets past his anniversary date, he leaves, I'm paying out three, three weeks vacation and half of his sixty, which can be in excess of about three hundred and sixty hours. So unfortunately, those costs are just, they're in there and you can't get around it. The only hopes that you have of relief is if you do at least have somebody leaving, you're saving that money, trying to backfill it eventually, but it does allow a little bit of relief if you don't hire anybody for a month or two. Those monies for that employee can offset a little bit of that cost, a little bit, not all of it. But that's just the way it is. I mean, I had guys leaving, I paid out. Well, I can tell you when I went from manager to sheriff, I was paid out over nine thousand dollars. But it's just a cost, unfortunate. And you have to figure it out and see what's best, but.
They probably need to be a work session in themselves.
Well, what's happening is, is it's not necessarily in like Patty's area, but in like the EMS and the sheriff. Because there's not enough people, it's getting ate up with overtime.
Right, so.
So you don't have the money to pay out at the end of the year. I mean, just think about what we had to transfer to the general fund to cover from other departments when they had gone over. And you don't have that kind of a carryover for another year.
Right.
And even if one person decided that we, we can't stop that five o'clock at ten hours, four miles an hour.
Right.
We can't stop it compared to Patty's office or, or, you know, Rusher Deeds office. We can't stop that twelve hours because of what's taking place during that twelve hours pushes us on into the thirteen, fourteen, fifteen hours.
Right.
Beginning of the situation, then those people are coming back in on their days off on the following day and starting to get hours, correct? And so I said, it's a, you really can't, I mean, I could pull a number out there.
It's even worse in EMS because we pay overtime at forty hours where we don't pay it at forty hours.
Has anybody done any kind of research on what's more cost effective, an extra body with benefits or overtime? Has anybody looked into that at all?
It's comparable. I mean, you're comparing oranges to necks of beans. So I mean, they're not a whole lot different, but they're similar, so.
But you'd like to try to avoid burnout.
Well, I get all that, trust me.
So really on our public, so really on the public safety side, what we need is more employees on the public safety side.
And EMS.
That's why I said the public safety side, so EMS.
Yeah, all of them.
EMS.
First responders.
Sheriff, all our first responders, we just need more employees. So the guys can afford to take time off to not burn out and not get. Has you guys ever done a study on that? Have you ever done a study on that to find out how many you would need to cover your department?
I did one two years ago, my first, can't sure if I'll, if I can find it or not. But the numbers itself will show that you know, covering for extra personnel would be able to help offset that.
I just wonder, you know, cost wise, you know. Of course, that would change now because, because we're gonna be doing budget next, so.
And people have to understand, you know, ten years ago, when the pay salary was X and now we're here, ten years later, pay increase has gone up.
Right.
Whole new different ballgame when it comes to salaries.
Right.
Pay out, vacation, overtime.
Well, when you let them carry it over, when you let, when you let it carry over, then you're paying them at a higher rate when you pay it out. Not what they accrued at, you're paying it at the rate that they're leaving at. It's constant.
It does. But I mean, having, having been an elected person before, the use it or lose it, I don't agree.
No, I don't agree with that any, because they earn their, they earn their time off, I'm not. So, and, and I would prefer they take seven days off and.
Sure.
And go lick doorknobs, if that's what they want to do, that relieves their stress, but.
Sometimes getting that seven days off in a row.
Right.
On the public safety side, it's a, it's a quality that they have, they don't want to be targeted by.
Right, no, I get that, I get that, I understand that completely. I mean, it's the same way with taking fifteen days to leave the army, you don't like to leave when your guys are in a combat zone, so.
Well, I disagree with it too, because I've been on the side of losing it, so.
So first responders aside, because it's obviously, we've gotta figure that out for those guys, because we can't be having those guys reach burnout and. I mean, I don't care if they take their vacation one day at a time, as long as we're getting some time off to, to relax and do something other than just be stressed out all the time, but. The vacation and sick time policy works for the rest of the departments, correct? I mean, because your guys, I mean, your gals can take their vacation anytime and.
I would rather.
Mine can't. And hers is the same way.
What about you?
During elections, she's not gonna want them to, during tax time.
Right, there's certain times where you don't want them to take off, but there's.
So that gets to the end of the year and I've got, you know, four girls I've got trained now, they know they take their vacation before we get to the middle of November.
Well, that's, that's a little different than there never being a good time.
Right, yeah, so that's.
And you said you guys are the same way, Eric?
We know from Thanksgiving, about first week in January, we're pretty much ghost town out there. Some of them are using up their leave. But that works out good for us because our construction season, when we're really trying to work projects and what have you, is from March, April, all the way up to November, so. Yes, people take some vacation in between there, but a lot of them use it up during the November.
During the holiday season.
And see, and that's the same thing with public safety, everybody pushes till.
The end of the year.
If you create your overtime, try to cover that, because crime doesn't stop during.
Right, yeah, right. Well, the coyote needs to take vacation same time the duck, sheepdog does. Clock out at the same time. The coyote, the coyote and the sheepdog don't take vacation at the same time.
I'll take that under advisement. I'll put a Facebook post out.
Well, you're, you're, no, I won't, I won't go there, I won't go there. What we were talking about outside.
Calling a blue flag day.
I say, I'll give you another personnel.
Give me an idea, it'd take you about one mill every year that you have to dedicate for that liability.
For the first responder side of the?
For all.
For all of it, that's all of it?
You allow carryover.
So.
And I'm not, if I don't mean the past commission, I'm not saying negative or positive, but with them decreasing mills the last several years, they've basically killed us.
Hurt everybody.
We know.
We know. Yeah, I have no desire to.
Like I said, I'm not, negative or positive about the past mission, but that's what we're faced with now.
Right.
Now, hang on, you just made a statement back. You said rather than staying revenue neutral. I just want to make sure everybody understands what revenue neutral is. Revenue neutral is you are not raising any new funds from the county if you stay R and R.
Right.
So if assessed valuations, when your assessed valuation's up a little bit, you could capture some more money if you kept your levy flat.
Stayed levy neutral, not revenue neutral.
The problem is, is as Bill stated, we stayed revenue neutral a couple of years.
Which lowered the mill levy, which, yeah. Which means we brought in less revenue.
Yes, and that hurt you. And you didn't cut your expenditures, so therefore we were spending more.
Yeah, because.
Still spending the same amount of money or more and so it used up all your cash reserves.
Right.
We were paying, paying our bills out of our savings account.
That's exactly, that's a good point.
All of our bills, contract bills and everything else, those costs have increased every year.
Right.
So if you're not going to adjust for those costs, it's like one bit, like just one contract a year ago, I think I was paying twenty-three, twenty-four thousand, this year to get pushed over is twenty-nine thousand. So it's gone up, where does that money come from? Where does that money come from?
Right.
So even on the jail side, food costs. So, you know, that's increased. Medical costs increasing. I mean, I can provide a list of all the increases that are taking place.
Right.
Just on the law.
Right.
Vehicles, they increase.
Right.
Is there any thing outside of these topics that any of you guys want to address with us? This is as much for you guys as it is for us. We're going to read over all this stuff, but anything that's not in there that you guys would like us to know, this is, this is your time. Crickets.
I just, general question, what is the value of one mil in Berwick?
The value of one mil? You ask me that and I don't know right off the top of my head.
What would you guys have for mill levy last year?
Fifty-six.
Fifty-seven, something like that is what it was.
Was it that much?
Fifty-six point something is what I thought it was.
Maybe it was just under fifty-seven.
Yeah.
I don't remember.
That's running a whole different direction.
Right. What about you? You're quiet, how's your department? No problems with vacations or anything like that, no? What about emergency management?
One man show, so I I can handle it myself.
But did you sign it, that you understood it?
One mil, one hundred thirty-three, one seventy-nine, and we levy fifty-nine point nine. And we've done that the last three years, and we've raised money every year because we've kept it flat. So we've increased the amount of money bringing in. Because the year before, the assessed valuation was a hundred and twenty-six thousand, or a hundred, that's what one mil would generate. And the assessed valuation the year before that was a hundred and nineteen thousand, so that kind of gives you an idea, it's grown.
But even with that growth, the coffers
Do what?
Said, but even with that growth, the coffers are
Yeah.
Well, because we, but the last
We increase expenditure, we can cut.
Well, and, and they, we, we voted to give some money for, you know, public health and I mean, it's part of what's bringing a hospital to town and part of, I mean, we I mean, it is what it is, it was a costly doing business, but we got a I really think part of the vacation time thing and, and the expense on it is figuring out how to make sure we have the manpower in certain places when guys do take off. And like Bill said, when one guy's scheduled for vacation, he leaves and the next day somebody has to call off for medical leave for two or three days because an emergency happened, you know, that's. I'll come fill in, I don't have a problem with it, bud, I'm not.
I can think one thing I always did when I worked my budget, is I always had a formula that I based on, that I had basically salary to benefit to replace the cost. And that was usually an exit percentage. And that was figured into my budget for either wages or whatever. So that was something I always figured in. Worst case scenario, I lose two guys. Well, I know I made sure that I budgeted that correctly to, I wouldn't say cover a hundred percent of them, but I covered probably eighty, seventy-five, eighty percent of them. So if those are replacements, I'll put again, that's something that's already been budgeted.
Right.
What all did you want to address, Dave?
What's that?
What all did you want to address on this?
I think we're, we're hitting on, we're hitting on it. I mean, the main thing, uh, is we need to go, I mean, two thousand and two, twenty-some years here, that hasn't, hasn't seen much, and I know times changed since then, so. I think we need to pretty much read it, go through it and see what needs to be changed, what, what needs to stay, what what each department is comfortable with on how it's working.
Well, that's where input from these guys is going to help us because they're going to know better than, than us.
Same thing with job descriptions, some of these don't look like they, I mean, I see it's stamped, uh, last updated nineteen ninety-nine. Probably job has changed a little bit since then.
Now, I can tell you, um, in our system, we have, um, even though those are the job descriptions, a lot of those aren't even in our system. We have to put them in by a position that correlates with the work comp code. So it's, it's super important when we're, when we're creating these job descriptions that we have what corresponding work comp code is there because we have a work comp code every year that we have to do through the process and so.
Right.
When that happens, we have to make sure that, you know, we tried to clean that up. I know we've worked with Eric a lot on putting this all cleaned up and.
Is there no regulations on how often this stuff's got to be looked at and updated? No?
Right. So, so so the job descriptions that are in here, like you said, uh, a while ago, there doesn't match what you have on file, right? I'm talking to you, Bill. Yeah. I, I'm sorry, I, I just, I'm looking, I'm looking over Mike's head there.
I know, and I do not work here.
I don't know, I thought I seen watchdog in there.
It doesn't pay very well. What was your question again?
What you have on file, what you give as far as job descriptions to your employees is not the same that's in here. Okay, what about you, Eric?
We started that, like Susan says, a couple of years ago, and it went nowhere.
So we could throw the book away. And then each department just maintain their own.
Well, it would be nice to have a copy in the clerk's office for, I mean, you don't know how many times we have to go to a hearing for an unemployment hearing. A lot of times you pull in the, the department heads because they're the ones that are going to know what happened in the disciplinary procedure.
Right.
Or, um, if it's a work comp, but we always have to supply it, you know, they will always ask that. So it'd be nice to just have one on record somewhere, and it being us at the clerk's office.
I, I, I can see that. But I mean, rather than go through this book and then try to match up if everybody's already just been doing it on their own.
So the only thing we need to work in then as the commissioners is the sick time and the
Well, I don't know what else is in the handbook that probably needs to be updated.
I guess my question is with the handbook and then these resolutions, if we combine them, you guys are all okay with that? That's what, that's what, that's what we're getting at.
Say, you know.
How about if department heads and elected officials work together, go through this, come up with recommendations? We were doing that before and then it stopped. We all work together, go through this, and then come back to you with some recommendations, suggestions, what have you, and, and work through a little bit at a time and, and get a very good employee handbook.
Well, you articulated that better than what I'm trying to get at. That's why I keep asking, is there anything you guys want to add, subtract, what, what do you want to work on?
Be available for those meetings.
Do what?
Could one of you be available for those meetings?
They want to have it on a Tuesday or Wednesday.
They want to have it after five o'clock.
Come in here and meet with all of them at the same time, they can even beat up on me if they want to, I don't care.
I got a question, and this is to Mrs. Walker, the handbook that you ordered, if you can show you. Was that information that was coming from the mineral, uh, human resources guide?
It was, um, kind of taking what we had, um, I would go, if there was one that I kind of questioned on, um, policies and procedures, I would look at other like I would look at the school district, I looked at the cities, and I looked at SHRM, just to kind of get, so that we didn't get too much, like FMLA, FLSA, equal opportunity employer, those kind of things are just general, you could just put them in there and say, we follow these regulations. And so you're not having it updated all the time. And so it was more things like that.
So the question was, do you all overlook through the mineral, uh, handbook that's provided by Mineral Group K Camp?
I did not look at that one.
So that would be
Mineral, I apologize, or K Camp, since we belong to K Camp, K Camp pays for a service through the mineral group. Last two people that actually have access to that is Justin Meeks and myself. There is a template handbook that's already in there. All you have to do is just add whatever you need, FMLA, Cobra, whatever, so on and so forth, about a hundred and somewhat pages. It's real, it's real simple. We have it, it's done.
The problem is, is that
I couldn't get on there.
The specifics, the specific things that we have that are to our organization would have to get implemented into that. We can do that, it's no different than like the SHRM one or
Like I said, K Camp, we're a base of a service, so it's just a matter of logging in, going through. You can, you can make whatever adjustments you need to make, save it as a, a running rule.
Did we, uh?
The reason I ask is some of the things that she presented several years ago were almost identical to the, uh, the mineral group when you were presenting the introduction and stuff like that.
Because it was probably already in our handbook. It's all stuff that, it's just, most handbooks have the same information in.
Yeah, I looked at several different counties.
This is a
Most of them follow that K Camp template, so.
Well, this is a question for the three of us.
Probably want to follow K Camp because they're the ones who's insuring it, so.
Right. Right.
We decided that we're going to do the work sessions at every other or what, or whatnot. Have we already decided what the work session is for next time around?
Well, we're going to be going into budget.
Yeah, we're starting a budget discussion.
But after that.
We got this.
I'm just thinking that if we, if we, if one of those can, to give these guys time to look this stuff over and, and, and write down any questions, concerns, or ideas, and then we come back to it.
I think if K Camp's already got a generic handbook,
we have to still adapt it to
We, yeah, we just apply it and then make the changes we need to to fit our organization and.
Is that what they did in two thousand and two, or we don't know really?
It was written by, it was written by Terry Johnson and Valerie Wong.
Oh. Okay, well, the next work session would be, uh, in two weeks.
March tenth, right?
Yeah. So you guys think you could
That's what I was asking.
You guys are wanting to, what you said about a meeting of, or do you want to just do it on the tenth? Look at it individually, then we all come together on the tenth and hash it out? I'm, I'm just talking in general.
I thought whatever, so I can, we all put our heads together and.
I think it's going to be, take longer than two weeks.
Right, but why don't we
I mean, I think you could give us
Several months.
Right, if we, but if we start with the, if we start with the K Camp outline of a handbook, and we let the department heads and the elected officials work together, and I can sit in on those meetings, I don't have a problem with that, we can do them on Tuesdays or Wednesdays at whatever time.
So Bill, are you offering to pull that down?
Work off, yeah.
And we, we, we work together and add what we need to and take out what we don't need. I mean, that seems like the best, most logical thing to do. And we, and there's no timeline on it, we can, i- if it takes us all year to get this damn thing put together, it's fine. We don't have to have it tomorrow.
You can run basically while I do, I'll just board the mineral side, Susan can apply for login information through administrators, you have access to everything. You can roll off from there if that's what you choose to do.
Well, if, if those department heads have access to, if it's a, just a working core, you put your notes out to the right inside, just like the ZIM, whatever it is. And theoretically, the three of you can go on and look and see where he put it, or he put it, or Susan put it, or Shane put it. And you can see everybody's input and come up with a general idea of what, what works or what doesn't work. And that way you have everybody's input right there in front of you, such a button on the screen.
We have SharePoint too, so you can put it in that SharePoint site. Then everybody can He checks out the document, then nobody else can do anything to it while he's using it. So he can go in and put his stuff in there, it's similar to the loan to home lane security at K Camp, where you can't alter while somebody else is working it.
But that way you have access to it at home or on the lunch, or whatever you want to lunch.
So, uh, why don't we set that up?
Yeah, I mean, we can't, because in SharePoint, everybody's got a county email, has access to it, so all the department heads do have access to it. They can access it through their phone, iPad, laptop, hotel computer.
I actually set up a county group, it's called, um, County Officials, so we can just share it through there, I just set that up. I'll need to add you guys.
And each person.
The problem is, is that you guys can't communicate. So it would just need to be one of you. You can't, the three of you can't be on there doing it.
So one, one person, he was already going to go to the meeting, so I mean
That's fine.
But I'll, that just saves having to go to a meeting, uh, or trying to schedule everybody for the same time, timeframe for a meeting. And then the final product can be brought before the three of us.
And as far as the other thing goes with the overtime, is that something that you could work on and give us some options and?
You mean for the vacation?
That'd be part of this, this overall thing, I mean, that's in there, that's one of the, one of the sections, so everybody, you know, kind of throw out what they think they
I could get on the list serve and see what other counties do.
Yeah.
I mean, I think the biggest holdup on the vacation and sick time is our first responders. I mean, that's, that's what blows their bud, that's what blows their budgets to hell is their, their covering vacation and their sick time.
And he wants to get, you know, with bigger teller, we can have my side of the vacation, overtime, stuff like that, we'll see what they can do.
I'd like to have information from both of you, just in case someone has a better idea than the other, um, because I, I would like to see it be completely addressed and have some options to actually fix it, um.
I don't know his schedules, so I won't be able to give anything on that.
If you're talking, if you're, sorry to interrupt you, if you're talking about overtime, we all in this room are aware, we are not going to get rid of overtime.
No.
But we know this.
Right.
I just don't want to kick this down, can down the road any longer, I want to get eyes on it and get a fix for it and.
It may be that uncomfortable thing that we have to do in the budget that's, you know, that's going to address it, rather than be over budget every, you know.
There are certain things, and I'm, like I said, I'm I'm only speaking for myself, I know there are certain issues that have needed fixed for years that even I realized were issues when I worked for the county that, you know, if I leave in four years, I want to be able to hang my hat on that they got fixed before I left. So I don't want to kick the can down the road, I want to help get it fixed, so that's why I want options and these guys want options. So if you both could do that, that'd be great.
And, uh, job descriptions, uh, anybody have a problem emailing their copies to the, to the clerk, so she has one on file or?
For what, what did you say?
Job description.
Oh, job descriptions.
And you want, you like a work comp job description, like my department's just or do you want it for
Um, I think you could just do clerk Um, I think you could just do clerk, I'd have a generic one for clerk, 'cause it's kind of like-
'Cause that's what everybody in my office would be classified with.
It's like an absentee.
Yeah.
I think, would that be accessible to, would that be accessible for, like us, or?
Yeah, um, yeah, that's right. Um, so I set up a, a group, it's actually a shared, um, file system. And I sent, it should've sent you guys all an email. And in that email, all you have to do is log in one time, and then you have access to all the agendas, all resolutions, all, everything that, that, since I've come into office, has been put in there. So correspondence that maybe you might've missed in an email, it'll be sent in the folder there.
And we were wanting some of these job titles for, um, like wage scales, things like that.
Yeah, job descriptions for wage scale.
That's why I was asking, if, if they all send it to her for, to be on file in the clerk's office, then we should be able to get access to all of them in one spot, so, rather than having to print another book that sits around for twenty some years and doesn't get up.
Pertinent for like road and bridge and things like that.
Yeah.
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 And those are pretty, I can give you that already, we've already got, um, positions. So I painted you out in your brackets.
Yeah, right here.
Yeah. This says employee by position, and so that'll tell you, like, right now, this is the current positions in here. So we would need a job description for ambulance EMT one, ambulance paramedic. And so it just kind of goes down through, and some of these will be, like, EMT is really just one job description, although you have three different categories.
Right.
Maintenance five is like Jordan Bridge, maintenance four, three, two, and they have them categorized that way. Um, so this really kind of gives you those, what we would need job descriptions on.
And I got-
Maintenance five would be our supervisors.
Right.
And then step down, we, we're kind of separated by class A, CDL, class B, CDL, um-
And are there, your pay skills, uh, basically reflect that?
Most of it, there's a few that, in there that's different, but, um, basically, yes, basically we have a set rate for, um, new hires, we have a set rate for class B drivers, class A drivers, equipment operators, and then supervisors, but there are a couple supervisors that are paid a little higher, mainly because of responsibilities that they're supposed to have on them that, you know, they do or they have started.
Is there something that is in there that, say, a, a new hire with a special skill set that's still a new hire, do they get hired at, at a higher?
We try to, we try to work with everybody for what they, what they bring you to the table.
Okay, and that?
I had started a, I think I showed it to David, I had started a salary schedule that basically kind of generalizes, like, we have lots of clerks. Okay, this is just out of an example in this building. And it would, you might bring them in at their base, but they've got five or six years of experience doing the same type of work, you could bring them in at that point. And the salary schedule pulled in, 'cause we've been doing longevity, we've been doing, we have two different longivities. One annually, if you have the funds, and then there's one that's built in that if you've been here so many years, you get so much money each pay grade. So basically, in that salary schedule, it took what they were making plus their longevity, and then that's how we did this schedule. So if, as you're doing budget, if you say, okay, I wanna move everybody one step this, this year, well, what a, a step in between was one percent. So you could say, okay, we might wanna move them two steps, so it's a two percent. But it gives them, gives you the ability to go out to thirty years, and it's already, it's already calculated in there a one percent increase. 'Cause I think if you don't get back to having a salary schedule of some sort, we're gonna get so out of whack where, where Patty and I, our budgets are so small, we keep give, we can't even hardly give our people a ten cent raise.
That's the reason I'm asking the questions I'm asking.
Goes towards publications, copy paper, basic stuff, but we have a very small budget to be able to even give our people a raise. So having that salary schedule will allow that, but if you have department heads that are able to just go out and give a two dollar raise, they may have it in the budgets, 'cause they're, got their budgets, but what it's, what it's doing to your employee benefits fund is you didn't budget for that two dollar raise that they gave, and your employee benefits just went up. And when I say employee benefits, I'm talking about taxes, bike and taxes, and things like that, those kinds. And that wasn't accounted for, because you're letting them just make the choices without having any kind of a sign off. So that's why a salary schedule's important.
That's kind of the reason why I'm asking some of the questions that I'm asking, I'm not fishing, I'm just asking. And like, for instance, if you got a guy that comes in with a, a college degree, you know, to, to drive equipment, but you gotta get, is he gonna come in making the same as a, or even close to a guy that has been there twenty years with no education?
So where you make money, that out here for us, that's longevity pay, is that longevity check at the end of the year? That's what pays the employees that we have that's been there a long time, that's what gives them a difference. Everybody else is paid similar, um, based off CDLs, based off job performance. Um, if we bring somebody in that's, that's qualified for what we want, we're gonna try to pay them more off the get going. I mean, they're qualified to do the job, where we don't have to actually start them out and train them, and, you know, get them their CDL, or teach them how to run a piece of equipment, or something like that. And that's, it works more for us to have somebody that can do all of it.
Now, there's, there's two different-
The salary schedule, the person would come in, if they have ten years of running a piece of equipment, he could bring them in at that ten year spot.
Mm-hmm. Well, and do, do you guys hire them at that, or do you make sure that they're actu, I mean, there's, there's a difference between qualified on paper and qualified on the job site?
You do your homework, so then you can call, find out, ask.
I mean, do you, do you put them on like a, you're, I'm gonna start you out here, and then sixty days, we'll put you up to this, or?
What your policy say?
Our policy actually says we're supposed to start them out, yeah, ten percent less or something like that, that's what I was told.
Yeah, and they give them-
What I'm getting is we got a lot of policy issues, or I'm asking questions.
Yeah.
No, we have not done that. We, we brought them in where, where we talked, that they should be, where they should, we thought they should play in. And if they, if they've impressed us with bumping.
Yeah.
Okay. And I'm asked, not a, I'm not asking questions, 'cause I think you've done something wrong, I'm just asking questions, so I- 'Cause when I ask other questions, I got crickets, so now I'm getting deeper in my questions.
Yeah, buddy.
The structure's broken, I mean, yeah.
So, I guess, did you say we're supposed to be starting these guys that supposedly have, well, let's say a guy comes in and says he's got twenty years' experience. Are you starting him at the twenty years' experience mark, or are you starting him at the ten percent less to make sure he actually does have his?
No, we just start him at the normal rate, but it's based off of what qualifications they have as far as driver's licenses mainly. Uh, our non-CDL drivers start at a certain wage, you got a class B, we start at a certain wage, you got a class A, we start at a certain wage, and then we try to, it, it, the ones that prove that they're worth more, I shouldn't say that like that, 'cause that's not really the truth, 'cause they're all, they're all worth a lot.
Just have more qualifications, interesting.
But we got, we got people that, that do different type of jobs, and, and to us, it's worth a little bit more, um, but usually, usually it's just lead operators that are outside of the bar.
And I, and that was a question, I, I was gonna jump in here, I'm, I'm looking through this, um, and how many positions do you got?
I'm supposed to have thirty-nine.
How many?
Thirty-nine and two.
I know, I mean, how many job titles do you got? 'Cause you talk about lead operator, you talk about, you know, uh, drivers, uh, supervisors, how many supervisors you got? 'Cause I don't, I mean, I'm looking at the names here, and I don't see who's supervisor, who's not.
In, in five would be a supervisor, and I believe-
Maintenance five.
Maintenance five.
And it would be, it could be like Virgin Culvert, landfill, and the reason why it has to be broken out that way is because of the work comp code. They have a different work comp code assigned.
Okay.
I think we have six.
Supervisors?
I think.
I don't remember without really having my sheet in front of me, it's not me.
You have to, like, you have to give me one that says landfill maintenance five, or there'll be one that says virgin bridge maintenance five, or special, Virgin Culvert.
Yeah, Virgin Culvert, maintenance five, special bridge maintenance five.
I'm not seeing that maintenance five in this list, so.
Just saying five beside it.
Am I, am I missing something?
So this is just, you're looking at the wrong thing, right here. So when you look at these, so see it says Virgin Culvert maintenance four.
Okay.
I, this is a different report, I just wanted to give you that, so you could kind of-
So, but I, does this show every employee?
Uh-huh.
Okay.
Yep.
'Cause it said this, okay.
Yep.
I was thinking hourly versus salary, but- Okay, there's something to look at here.
And, I guess one last question, Eric.
Yeah.
Is, is the way your hierarchy, is that spelled out in your, in your handbook that you guys use? Do you have any kind of form that spells out your hierarchy and, and what your wage breakdown is for them to be able to see when they're a new hire?
We have a little chart of how, how everything is, the wages are on the grid.
The wages are set by the commission.
Yeah.
And they're supposed to-
I, I, that, that part I get, I'm just, let's say if I come in and I'm, I'm, I'm wanting a job with you, and I wanna see what it takes to get more money. Right, but I, is-
Can I, can I?
Do you have?
Okay, so when, when I look at our organizational chart, and it comes down to public works director, it's you. Okay, and from there, do you have something similar that shows all your positions, all your supervisors, who's under them?
Absolutely.
Okay, that's what we need, you know, that's kind of what we're talking about.
I give that to you, I don't have that with me, but it's all broke down and-
Yeah, that, does that answer what you're?
Kind, kind of, I mean, I, let, let's, for instance, if I come in and I'm new-
Yes.
And I wanna see what is, what I've gotta do for myself to better myself-
Absolutely.
To get, get pay bumps, since you do it by accolade. Is there, is, do you have anything in your building, or anything that you give them to where they can see what they gotta do to go up?
If, if you don't, if you're coming in ground level, do not have a class B or A CDL, you'll start at this. If you have a, once you have a class B-
I get, I, I get how you do it.
Once you have a class A, you're there, so it gives you the incentive to work your-
I, I, I get, I get what you're saying there a hundred percent. I guess, I'm, I'm asking, do they know how to, is there?
No, the answer to the question is no.
Okay, thank you.
There's no, there's no scale, no path for them to follow, other than just getting out and working. They're gonna be just seeing it, and you, I mean, with the budgets the way they are, you gotta plan on raises a year in advance, pretty much, or try to-
Well, that's something I'm hoping that we're gonna, we're gonna be working on, um, just like Susan was saying earlier, we need to have, have something that's a little more structured, so that every, from year to year, you know, we're not having to play a guess game.
We was able to pay most of our employees by absorbing overtime, we paid roughly ninety thousand dollars a year in overtime for asshole, all that stuff, with previous bosses.
Right.
When Eric took over, Eric cut overtime completely out, and now if a tree or something falls across the road on the weekends, me and him cover it 'cause of salary.
Gotcha.
Which allows, allowed us to pay more per hour to the guys, um, than what we was making, 'cause what our bottom rate is now was a top rate.
Gotcha.
When we started, other than like four guys were making more than what our bottom rate is right now.
Well, the reason I asked that question is, I've worked at places before where, you know, they tell you, you gotta do this stuff on your own time, like a CDL or whatnot, and they don't pay, you know, there's places that don't pay for it. They say you do it on your own time, you go get it, you come to me with it, you get, you get a bump. So that's kind of where I was, that's the reason for my direction for my question.
When that all came out, the CDL deal, back, what, four years now, or three years, somewhere in there, we went ahead and gone on board, but we could be a train to trainer, so we could actually train our employees to be able to get a CDL license.
Well, that's smart, that's good.
So what's our bottom starting rate now in public works?
Um, seasonal's fifteen. Archon, and then fifteen, is it fifteen ninety-nine or fifteen ninety-nine?
Okay.
That's the starting rate.
So sixteen bucks an hour?
Yes.
Why do we do ninety-nine?
Because of my concern, and they would be percentage raises in the past, so it looked out to be, like, forty-seven to ninety-nine, or something like that, on years.
That's common core math.
Yeah, yeah, that's what it is.
Monkey wears a purple hat, that's what that equals up to.
Uh, sorry, school teachers.
He's saying else.
And then, so-
Take it from your phone to the person.
What is the starting rate for our courthouse employees, like the, this building?
Fifteen.
Yeah, and that just got changed, yeah, some people making thirteen dollars an hour.
I mean, I had everybody in my department, except for the deputy, they got a, a little bit more for that, and it wasn't that much, but everybody made the same. Whether you'd been there one year, or, well, you walked in the door, whether you'd been there ten years, you made the same thing.
'Cause there was not enough fluc, there was not enough fluctuation in her budget to give them anything else.
Right.
And then he'd have to come and beg to give them a fifty cent raise.
And is there, like, he was saying, is there different levels, like you said clerk?
So everybody makes this, everybody makes the same.
Whether they've been there a long time-
Except for, except for your deputy.
Short time, yes.
Except for the deputy.
So-
I can't remember how much, it's not that much.
So-
A dollar difference.
Yeah.
But-
But some of them are worth more money than others, aren't they?
Definitely, but we don't have that.
Based on, based on their job description of what they would actually do.
Well, there are only minutes. The requirements of the job sometimes come into play, too. Um, like for a payroll person, they have to know a lot of stuff, they have to, if we don't meet the IRS deadline that we have to do every, when we do payroll, you have a massive penalty that you're gonna pay if you don't pay it on time. And so when we, when I've done salary, um, things in the past, different organizations, you look at the fiscal responsibility, you look at what they do day to day, uh, if it's a safety, like, you get in the public safety, if you're gonna go, you know, there's, there's levels of things that you look at when you're setting your salaries, um, what's their responsibilities? And here, in the courthouse, it's harder, 'cause there's no incentive for these people, 'cause there's only, there's only two steps.
Well, then why don't?
There's nothing worse for a job turnover than never getting a raise.
Our department heads and our elected officials here in this building, write up a, I just forgot the words. Yeah, salary schedule for your employees, based on what you're expecting out of them and what, because I agree, not every girl in the drivers, or the tag office should be making the same amount of money, some of them, they should fluctuate, based on how long they've been there, based on the, based on the-
That step thing would come in real handy, because you could have, of bringing in somebody at fifteen dollars an hour, but somebody who's been here five years is making sixteen, twenty-five, you know?
Right, that's what I'm saying, we need to-
Yeah, there's nothing-
But we, we can look at job descriptions all day long, but you tell me she's a clerk, and the next girl's a clerk, I have no, I, why would I pay one more than the other, other than time on the job?
But like in twenty years here, that's how it's been in Patty's office, clerk's office, Steve's office.
But the word, but you got guys-
Across the board raise, like, one percent if they get-
I bet.
But we got guys, but we got guys sitting at this table that wanna- But we got guys, but we got guys sitting at this table that want to change that.
Yeah, yeah, that's good.
So that's what I'm saying. Bring us the information so we can look through it. And the attorney do the same thing. Well, I mean, we're willing to work with everybody to try to get salaries right for everybody, because your girls aren't gonna be there forever. At some point, we're gonna have to replace them.
And price of living is going up.
And so it's, we, we've got to be, it's not just retaining the employees they got, it's being able to replace the employees when they leave, whether they.
I'll tell you that the one thing, I mean, last year, we did make a big, a big step by bringing everybody to the fifteen dollars. And they get a nice raise, because they went from thirty-five hours to forty hours a week, whereas they, they weren't allowed to work forty hours a week. And so that, that helped those people. So they were really, they were getting paid, what, twenty-three thousand, twenty-three to twenty-five thousand dollars a year?
Yeah.
Was they getting benefits on top of that?
Yeah.
At thirty-five?
Yeah, but still, man.
Yeah.
No, I'm not, no, I'm not complaining about that. They obviously needed an extra.
No, they're twice there.
I know, well, yeah, but, but you go from back to twenty-eight or twenty-nine, hey, that's really good.
I know.
But they're putting this five hours extra a week.
Yeah, they are, yeah.
You know, there are. That was twenty-five years ago, everybody worked for, and Terry Graham and some of those older commissioners to make the people happy, instead of giving them a raise, so we just don't have to work five extra hours. Well, then they lost all this money. And they've never been able to.
We're, we're kind of the opposite side of that.
I mean, we got, we got to take care of our employees, cause you gotta build.
And, and Laura, put up a little schedule for that. And it's gonna include Matt's office too, cause he's got some field grazers and things like that.
Susan, there's, I know you got a lot to do and.
Oh, did you ask me to do something?
I'm getting, I'm getting ready to. I'm getting ready to. When. Just because I know there's a lot of people, including myself, that don't understand everything. Um, I didn't.
That's why you're supposed to have that job.
When we start looking at this kind of stuff and we start talking about mills, you lose a lot of people.
Kind of.
Okay. We just explained what a mill is. But if you could. Break down what a mill would cost each individual taxpayer, so they can see how.
Oh, what's that?
Little, and then a mill is to, to an individual.
You can't do it like that. You have to do it based on someone's, like, I can, I can do a mill levy calculation, but we're on a hundred thousand dollar home, or a hundred and fifty thousand dollar home. And so if we raise it one mill, this is what it's gonna do to you.
I'm not asking it to be like a, a spot on thing. I just want something broke down, so they can see how much little a mill is per person. Because a lot of people, when they hear mill, they think millions, which it's, it's nothing, it's nothing close to millions. And it once, I think if people understand that it's just pennies on the dollar, then.
I wish we could get to the conversation where we're talking about, this is what it takes to run our county. Not about cutting taxes, cutting, staying R and R, get those conversations out and just say, this is what it takes to run the county, and this is where we can.
That's where I'm going, that's where I'm going with this, okay? What I have learned quickly in this job is how little research a lot of people do. And they relay on Facebook facts. And they don't research for themselves. I want to, as a part of being up here at this table, and I think these two agree with me wholeheartedly. As we're learning, we're teaching, and that way they understand why we're doing it, how we're doing it, and what it's actually gonna cost, so they don't get on the internet and see some insane write-up that's nowhere near true. I'd like it broke down, so they can see that if we do raise a mill, if we do raise two mills, that it's, it's pennies on the dollars out of their pocket for the betterment of the county. I just want something to break down to be transparent and educate as we go forward.
Well, and, and Matt and I already kind of talked about this. When we come to do your first budget work session, he's gonna start the conversation with explaining about how taxes are even, how do, how do you get to a tax bill?
Right.
And then, then we'll go into the budget discussion. What, the budget honestly should be all year long. We should be having those conversations all year long, not two work sessions over the budget we adopted. We need to have multiple, cause it's a living, breathing document. It's what leads you on every expenditure that you have in the county.
That's part of how we start.
Well, and I say, and I think, I think the, the general public will, will appreciate that as well, cause there's a lot of folks that follow along. And they track everything that we, that we do, and I want them to be able to see what we do, understand what we do. And I think as, the county as a whole is gonna be better when they're all on the same page with us, not guessing what we're doing, or guessing what we're talking about. So is this gonna create a little bit more work for you guys when you come up here and talk? Yes, cause I want, I want you to, even if I know what you're talking about, I want you to come up here and talk to me like I don't have a clue. That way people can learn.
I can, I can tell you that since I came to the project's office in two thousand and eighteen, one of the biggest emphasis we had was to start educating people on what we do in our office, and why we have to do it that way. And it's helped so much with, I mean, we used to have a whole lot of appeal hearings, and they've really been cut down a bunch, because we explain to people, you know, we're not just raising it because we want to raise it, you know? Well, the first thing is always tell people it's not a commissioned job. I don't make more money by raising the value on.
Right.
You know, so it, it helps so much to educate people, because they don't understand running a county, running my office, running a county, it's complicated. And there's a lot more to it than just, you know, let's just do this, let's just cut that. So the more we educate people in the county, the more they're gonna understand and be able to come with ideas and stuff, because they understand and they can think of themselves on, on what they see as well. So, you know, and it'll help a ton if we get out in front, like you're saying, and educate people on why we have to do, what we have to do, why we have to do it that way.
And I don't think that.
Make these changes, you know, like in payroll, make changes on overtime and vacation, and all, all those things makes us run more proficient. And, and so then in the long run, either the services have picked up and we're, we're, we're giving them a product out there that's worthy, you know, and they'll be like, okay, I'm, I'm, I'm at least got good roads and I'm not worried about having to pay more taxes. That's always the two biggest things that, that are gonna get talked about in campaigns and.
And they don't think about the things like in the treasurer's office and.
Right.
And, and I'm gonna get on my soapbox over here, a little bit here, just talk about Patty and I. But what people don't understand is ten years ago, there was, she had a whole lot more employees in that office. And so. Yeah, and so. She's doing the same work or more, because there's been mandates that have come down, plus people. And that's when mistakes start to happen. That, I mean, that's why I was hired back in twenty twenty-two, was to kind of help get some of those things cleaned up. The amount of work that's here, sometimes you may have to look in the office and say, okay, do we need another person to help with this, because they can't keep up, they can't keep up. And you shouldn't have to live here all the weekends.
And where a lot of people don't understand is when the state puts in a mandate for us to spend more money, they don't give us that money. They just tell us we have to spend it.
Yeah, they just tell you you have to do it.
Right.
Vehicle office is breaking us. It's breaking every county in the state of Kansas. And also counties having to supplement theirs a million dollars a year.
That's why I wanna, I wanna do it this way. Everybody learn and teach and, and, and I'm not saying it's not been like this in the past, but I think with all of us in here, I think we can get along famously and we can, and we can educate one another and go forward.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Sorry, but I'd like to say, just because it was done in the past that way, doesn't mean that it's right.
Sure.
No, yeah, well, and that's why I said, you got, we've got, you've got.
We're here to fix it.
The elected officials that are trying to fix it. I mean, you got, and, and like we've had, I had the conversation with my two county bosses today about, you know, sometimes you can hire somebody and pay them a good wage, and it saves you money in the long run, because you don't have to pay for a third party, or you don't have to pay for this. Yeah, and you're not having to train somebody. And you can, and, and you can, you can bring a young person in and pay for their training, and it still pays off in the long run, because now you have this person that knows how to work on your equipment. And now you don't have to call Kat or John Deere, or the local guy in town to come fix it, who gets to charge you a hundred dollars an hour, as opposed to just paying your mechanic twenty-five or thirty dollars an hour.
Well, unlike in Patty's sake. I'll take fifteen dollars now if I need a job, cause it's better than zero. But I'm not gonna stay there forever if I can't get a raise.
Yeah.
And I'm not, can you hear? We have been beat to death to cut our budget, cut our, there is nothing left to cut my budget. If somebody can find a way, I can save money. I'd like to know, because it's just been.
I'm gonna email Elon, okay?
I, 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 no shit can go in here and try to find it. I, I'm confident. There's not, yeah, we owe you all the time, I mean, yeah.
He wouldn't even know I emailed him, but. There you would.
What do you mean? He's listening right now.
You know, like in Patty's office, twenty years ago, we had these IBM printers. And what she has now is a second printer. I mean, we don't buy stuff in waste.
Well, and that's, that's, well, and here's the deal. Just for example, how much does the computer system cost if we had to replace five computer systems? In.
But before, the state of Kansas paid for the computers in my office, because it was motor vehicle. They quit that.
Right.
I have to buy the computers, I have to buy the printers, I buy the paper, all that stuff. And the state has just bumped that down to us and, you know, they give us a little bit, but not enough to cover.
Yeah.
Anything.
Probably not even.
We're working on a bill, and we, but we've been working on a bill with the treasures for the last seven or eight years, trying to get more money out of the state. We're getting closer, and I'm gonna ask for the commissioners, when we get there, I don't think we're gonna get it this year, but maybe next year, to reach out to our representatives and push them and push them hard and let them know the county's tired of paying this for everybody.
When it's the state.
Yeah.
Mandating.
Yeah, it's, the state's the one that gets all the money out of it.
Well, yeah, they collect a lot of money from us.
Well, not, not.
Four dollars apiece when we went to the new computer system. And on everything we did, they got four dollars for modernization fee to pay for that. That's been paid for. So then they took that money and they gave it to DOT. It didn't come to us, but we're the ones that had to pay for the new equipment. So it's, it's kind of a mess.
Yeah.
Well. Sorry.
That's just what you wanted to hear.
Actually, actually, it's exactly what we need to hear, cause.
So. Right.
Well, that's, we're gonna change that. We're gonna talk about everything.
So we're gonna set up a share, share site, and you guys are gonna work on that. We'll then look at our notes.
I'll, I'll monitor it.
Okay.
See what they're doing.
Bring.
Ask them questions on why they want this, or why they want that.
So set a deadline as to far as when you're gonna bring it to the.
I don't think we need to set a deadline. I think we can just, we're gonna, we're gonna have, we're gonna have budget discussions, so every time we have a budget discussion, we can just ask about.
And we can't tell you guys what to do, obviously, but please help us help you.
So.
Well, we can tell some of them what to do.
So the next.
So, so the next.
Tell what to do, we'll be glad to work with you.
That's what we want. We want, we need information from you guys, so we can make informed decisions about the choices we're making.
Right.
Whether that's gonna cost more taxes, we can cut taxes, we can, that's all, I mean, it, it takes the whole county workforce, the leaders of the county workforce to, to relay all that stuff to us. We would like to give the blue collar side of everybody a raise. We would like to start buying equipment, cause I know we got some equipment at Public Works that's wore out. They're just, they keep banding it together to get it to keep going. You know, we got, you know, we got buildings we gotta work on, we've got, I mean, we've got all this stuff we've got to pay for and take care of, but we've gotta start making those decisions to get it.
Absolutely.
So.
Which reminds me, and Terry's not here tonight, but EMS go in the.
Yeah, I called a roofer today to have him go look at it.
But she's supposed to get home.
And, but we need two more, so if you guys know a, a commercial roofer, reach out to him, tell him to get all the Terry.
I can, I can.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a metal roof.
I'll give you the names of the ones that work with us, I'm giving quotes.
I'll give you, I can get, they'll give you the list of the five that are actually licensed to work here.
And then does anybody know where we are in that meeting?
No.
So.
Our county, our, our county council has reached out to him. He's waiting to hear back.
I think he's on vacation too.
But yeah, he's on a trip this week, a long overdue trip with his wife, so, I think, so. Next work session, zoning or budget?
Budget's on the twelfth, so do you want to do something different on the tenth?
Well, they, someone said they made the comment of needing a month, so.
A month for what? On the, on this, on this, now, but we got two other topics.
Well, and we got, and we got the, we got the, the advanced solar guy that wants to come talk to us too.
And you want it down on the nineteenth or twenty-sixth?
Nineteenth through the twenty-sixth. On Wednesday evening. And I'm sure everybody from the county is gonna show up for that one.
Twenty-ninth.
Twenty-ninth.
February.
Nope, has to be, has to be, sorry. I would love to do that.
Four years from now.
I would love to do that, but I think it's gonna be the, the.
In March.
The nineteenth or the twenty-sixth of, uh.
Of.
March?
March.
Do what? Just get it done, whatever it takes to get your job done.
It's like ripping a band-aid off.
Which one are you wanting to do next? Huh? Which one are you wanting to do next?
I don't know. That's what I was asking.
I think March tenth, we're gonna start talking about the budget. The twelfth was the budget meeting, right? So then the tenth, we can talk about the zoning.
I have this, I have this to read between then and then.
Are you gonna be up for it, or?
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna read it, and but I'm also going to look at it and tweak it.
I understand that you recruited some people. I like that.
I asked some people for it, if they would like to give input, yes.
Yeah, okay. Always good to have other input.
Yep.
All right, yes.
Hey, I need to get on your agenda sometime for hard surface roads to start talking work session on that, or whatever you want to do.
What do you, what do you?
I'm thinking maybe early part of April sometime, or that way, give you a little bit to decide what you want to do, and then maybe May, make a decision, give the public time for input. And then we can get started in June would be. So I just want to throw that out there at some point.
I want to start the next time the weather's seventy degrees.
You want to start south, or north?
I think I know where he wants to start.
I, I, I got suggestions.
You have.
I need Dale Roque. And really, there's one section you could do.
Eric, is there gonna be any literature that we're gonna get from you on this?
We, uh.
Is there gonna be any literature you're gonna give us on this before you come talk to us? On, on your work session, on your paved road stuff?
Paved roads, I, I will have information to you.
Can we get that well in advance?
Yes.
I have about four piles this big at the house already, so.
Do we know what material's gonna cost us this year yet?
Not yet.
Okay.
The sales tax up again.
Right, yeah.
I think they'll know that before they, before the meeting's like, they're through, it's about they.
We have not had that.
You have to adjourn this, cause I gotta get.
I don't know that we have to adjourn it.
We never went into session or anything.
Yeah, no, I think we can just call it a night.
Are we done?
What?
Permission to leave?
Yeah, permission to leave, if you want to leave.
Are we done?
I think so, I think. Oh, wait, March nineteenth, I'm gonna have the Norwegian guy show up, or the advanced guy show up.
The advanced guy, nineteenth at what time?
Nineteenth of March at five thirty.
Is that a Monday? Is that our ring or Wednesday?
No, it's a Wednesday, you know, it's Wednesday.
March nineteenth, five thirty.
And we're probably doing it in the lobby?
I am gonna let him know. Those were, those were one of the, that's one of the three dates he gave me. He said he'd show up on whatever day, but I'm gonna let him know the nineteenth.
Probably need to do it in the lobby? I mean, we're gonna have a full house.
We'll probably, we'll plan on.